All right, thank you for waiting, everyone. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Thursday, November 13th. And I will note for the record that all three commissioners are here and present in the Nat U Hill Room. We will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Madeira. Thank you.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin, and we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We believe in diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. We'll now move on to our department updates. Usually have somebody here from the Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Sorry, I don't know why the camera was shutting off. Just a few updates. According to the Indiana Department of Health Dashboard, since November 11th, emergency department visits for COVID-like illness have increased. Wastewater concentrations are high but lower than levels that we saw back in September. Flu activity across the state is still minimal. The Health Department does have free COVID tests still available. Individuals can walk in Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for free tests. And we have vaccines available. You can call 812-353-3244 for an appointment.
No, I don't.
Commissioner Madeira?
No, thank you.
Thanks for the information. Any other department updates? May come to the podium or raise your hand on Teams. All right, seeing none, we will now move on to public comment. This is time reserved for items that are not on our agenda. Folks who wish to make public comments should raise their hand on Teams or come up to the podium. We ask that you provide your name and county of residence before you begin speaking, and we ask you to limit your time to three minutes per person. Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to our next agenda item, please. Move approval of... I... We have a motion?
I second.
And a second. Any comments, corrections? All those in favor of approving the minutes for November 6, 2025 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable November 13th, 2025, and payroll November 14th, 2025.
I second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Woodruff, please tell us all about this.
The accounts payable claims docket for November 13th, 2025 totals $12,282,985.41. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments.
And so we have payroll? And we have uncertified claims?
Correct. So, I'm sorry, I was not clear to clearly both of you. My understanding is that you guys could vote on the certified claims that are presented, then the payroll will be presented and you can vote on, and then the uncertified.
Okay, thank you so much. Any comments or questions on certified claims? Accounts payable? For my colleagues, any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the certified claims, accounts payable November 13th, 2025 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Now we'll move on to payroll. Thank you, ma'am.
The payroll docket for November 14th, 2025 includes $1,597,384.27 in indirect cost and remaining $680,877.50 for indirect costs, for a grand total of $2,278,225.77.
All right, thank you so much. Comments or questions on payroll for my colleagues? Any public comment on the payroll side of claims? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. Okay, see none. All those in favor of approving the payroll part, portion of the claims docket for November 14th, 2025 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. And then we have some uncertified claims?
Yes. The uncertified claims docket for November 13th, 2025 totals $184.15. Uncertified claims are claims that cannot be certified for correctness or compliance with policy or regulation.
Okay, thank you so much. So, Mr. Cockrell, are we supposed to vote on this separately?
I think, if, I'm assuming you're meaning you have to vote on each individual item? Or can you vote on them as all together? I think you can vote on them as all together.
Okay.
If there are things in there that you think are appropriate or aren't appropriate.
Okay.
You can certainly change the amount and highlight which ones you think are appropriate or are not appropriate.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve all of the claims, which would also include the uncertified claims. So let's see if there's any public comment on this before we take a vote. And so, Mr. Cockrell, I'm going to ask you to do a roll call vote on this one, please. But I will just remind my colleagues that a yes vote means that we will accept the uncertified claims and a no vote means we will not accept the uncertified claims. Sorry for the double negative. Mr. Cockrell, please.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No. No.
A motion is not approved, there it is.
Thank you so much, sir.
And I think technically, then, I think you need to make a motion to...
Disallow.
Disallow.
I'm going to do that next, yes, thank you. So I move that we disallow the uncertified claims that were presented today for November 13th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of not approving the uncertified claims, all the triple negatives signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Are we good? All right, thank you. Okay, so we don't have any reports for today, but we do have new business. If you would, Commissioner Jones.
Move to approve the 2025 Sophia Travis Community Service Grant Agreements. Fund name, county general. Fund number, 1,000, in the amount of $163,950.
I second.
We have a motion and we have a second. We have Ms. Turner-King and we have Counselor Fidal joining us. Good morning.
There you go, it's working. Okay, so what's before you is the 2025 agreements with the social service agencies that would be in receipt of Sophia Travis grant funding. On October 28th, the council approved a distribution of $174,000 for the Sophia Travis Grants Program. The funds are being awarded to 43 nonprofit organizations that have projects related to one of the eight categories within the Sophia Travis ordinance. And those eight categories are food and nutrition, security, shelter and health, transportation assistance, climate change, emergency shortages, first responders, veterans assistance, excellence in government and/or youth enrichment. Although the council approved $174,000, there are three agencies whose contracts are not before you today because those agencies will be receiving a combination of Sophia Travis funds and funds that were donated in memory of Cheryl Munson. So I've deducted that amount from the $174,000 and those contracts will come to you later in December. So the contracts before you today total $163,950. And I do have a list of the agencies receiving funding, if you would like me to read them.
Please, if you would.
Okay. So Amethyst House is receiving $4,200 for residential food. Beacon is receiving $4,505 for dignity and emergency. Big Brothers Big Sisters of South Central Indiana is receiving $4,100 for a project entitled "One-to-One Plus Digital Initiative Advancing Mentoring with Technology in Monroe County." Bloomington Food Policy Council is receiving $3,890 for their People's United Garden. Bloomington Mills and Wheels is receiving $5,445 for hot boxes for Monroe County expansion. Boys and Girls Club of Bloomington is receiving $6,200 for two replaced cameras at the Elletsville Boys and Girls Club. Cancer Support Community South Central Indiana is receiving $3,480 for food and transportation assistance for cancer patients. Catholic Charities of Bloomington Counseling Services is receiving $3,420 for affordable therapy for low-income children and youth. Community Culture, Inc. is receiving $2,666 for their Bob's Garden Project. The Community Kitchen is receiving two awards, and one of them is a collaborative project with another nonprofit organization in Bloomington. So the first award for Community Kitchen is their collaborative agreement, and it's Community Kitchen/CPR-B Town. And they're receiving $366 for nonprofit CPR training. Community Kitchen is also receiving $5,600 for essential foods, essential programs food purchased. Constellation Stage and Screen is receiving $1,300 for the Constellation for Schools Student Matinee Program. Courage to Change Sober Living is receiving $2,400 for wraparound move-in and move-out help for residents. Exodus Refugee Immigration, Inc. is receiving $2,800 for their emergency assistance program. Handsful of Hope is receiving $800 for boutique clothing stock items. Hoosier Hills Food Bank is receiving $6,400 for fall and holiday food purchasing. Ivy Tech Community College is receiving $3,350 for Ivy Tech Hive and Harvest Food Pantry. The Middleway House is receiving $2,000 for their Supporting Survivors by Providing Comprehensive Resources and Support Program. The Monroe County Humanities Association is receiving $3,350 for critical care for vulnerable Monroe County families. My Sister's Closet is receiving $3,462 for providing a secure resource for women. The New Hope for Families is receiving $7,800. And this is a change in the, what is in the packet, the project title changed from Making Homeless Brief for Children to Preserving Food Access for Low-Income Early Learners. Pantry 279 is, oh, I skipped one, sorry. New Leaf New Life is receiving $3,210 for reentry transportation support. Pantry 279 is receiving $13,800 to help with increasing need for food assistance. Pathways is receiving $3,500 for supporting nutritional access for campus, early learner, campus, I assume that means campus, early learners, Centennial families. People and Animal Learning Services, so PALS, is receiving $5,280 for their Equine Assistant Learning for Youth Program. Planned Parenthood is receiving $3,600 for their Bloomington Health Center operations. Protect Our People Connect LTD is receiving $2,100 for their Front Door 2026 pop-up events. The Restore Habitat Humanity is receiving $2,236 for feeding their volunteers program. South Central Community Action Agency is receiving $6,300 for Covering Kids and Families Winter Resource Fair and Community Outreach. Second Baptist Church is receiving $4,700 for their SBC Feed the Needy Program. Seven Oaks is receiving $1,800 for their Seven Oaks student priority needs. Some Breo, I'm going to mess it up. Sombremesa Foundation, Inc. is receiving $2,700 for increasing access to nutritious food. St. Vincent de Paul is receiving $5,200. It's for their program solving a bed frame shortage, not storage, which is what was originally reflected in the contract. Steinsville Community Library is receiving $1,400 for their community library website and youth program expansion. Stone Belt is receiving $2,300 for the Milestones Play Therapy Program. Tandem Community Birth Center and Postpartum House are receiving $9,640 for essential funding. The Project School is receiving $5,400 for emergency shortage for special education services. Wheeler Mission is receiving $3,236 for building community within Wheeler Mission Bloomington's Day Room Program. The Wonder Lab is receiving $5,500 to support for, for support for social service organization accessibility to the Wonder Lab Museum. Writers Guild at Bloomington is receiving $4,200 for their first Sunday prose reading service. And I think that's all of them. No, one more. Writing for a Change is receiving $800 for the Friday Night Rights Program.
That's it, good. Thank you so much, appreciate that. Ms. Fidal, Counselor Fidal, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nothing specific, however, I just want to say how much I enjoyed serving on the committee. It was a great committee work. We had 46 applications, I don't think that was mentioned. And about, I think, double what it was, we had funds to fill. So the need was presented itself, and we had good community, or good committee deliberations on discussions about the projects. And the 501(c)(3) was met on each one, which was a criteria. And I look forward to hearing that we're going to fund these.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions for my colleagues? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the committee for their work on this. I know it's really difficult when you're confronted with so many needs and have limited money to give out. But thanks for the work you do, and it sounds like a good list here.
Commissioner Madeira?
Yes, I'd like to echo Commissioner Jones's comments, and I also think the need this year is particularly acute, and so this, these funds will actually go to meet critical needs in our community. Thank you.
Yep, I appreciate the work, and it's difficult work because as wonderful as it is to be working through a list and determining that agencies receive money that they sorely need, you do have to make cuts and limit the dollar amounts, and it's difficult work. And I know you had a couple of great community members on your committee as well as council members, so thanks to everyone who was part of this. I would like to make a motion, though, to amend the grant agreement list, and this would be to remove Seven Oaks from the list, which is $1,800, which would bring the total to
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any public comment on this amendment?
I would just like to know if there's a little further explanation of why this is being recommended?
For me, this is not only a situation where we have a school that is taking money from public taxpayer dollars, but also one that saw fit to sue us during COVID. And they did not work well with county health during that crisis, and I didn't appreciate that. But mostly it's because of the source of their funding for me, and I don't know if my colleagues want to add anything else.
I just had a question for the public. What is included in that particular grant, that $1,800?
Pretty sure, as I remember. Yeah, we've got the documentation here, hold on just a second. But as I remember, with the discussions we had with the committee, it was for food for the kids, right? So I know people who go there and their children go there, and some of the people that go there struggle financially themselves. So this was to help kids that go to the school with funding for food, as I understand it. I think Molly's just verifying that, I hope, so. And the only requirement, as I remember on the committee survey, is that they needed to be a 501(c)(3). So they met that requirement, and we didn't delineate any of them because of that.
Well, you had a council member who didn't want to fund Planned Parenthood either, so...
Yes, that's right.
Everybody was just fine with that, so...
That's right, yes. I mean, there are issues everywhere. I mean, we all have our preferences, right?
Absolutely.
So I tried to look at this particular one to benefit the kids. So it was about the kids for me.
Yeah, I hear you.
Regardless.
And for me, there's a lot of, there's like 13,000 going to Pantry 279, which is in that area. There are other, a number of other food security grants that are available, so I'm just not comfortable supporting a charter school for this purpose. So, okay. Any other, yes, ma'am?
I was just going to answer Commissioner Madeira's question. Seven Oaks applied for $5,500 in funding. They received $1,800. They could use that $1,800 to fund one or two things in their application because they broke it into using the funding for two requests. One was AP testing for seniors, and the other was backup blessings, emergency food. So that is the food program that Council Fidal was referencing.
All right, or they could spend it on AP testing. All right, let's go ahead and take a vote on the motion to exclude Seven Oaks from the Sophia Travis Community Service Grant Agreements. All those in favor of excluding Seven Oaks signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
May.
Okay, so that passes to one. And go back to the full motion here. Is any public comment on the amended motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the amended motion for the Sophia Travis Community Service Grant Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you all so much. Next item, please.
Just for clarification, do you need the recipients to meet you in the council conference room?
I do, and I told most of the recipients in the hallway to do so, but if I missed any in the meeting room, we're just going to meet in the council conference room.
Yeah, contracts have been signed, they're there. Thank you. Thanks for reminding me, I just would have had that stack of paper sitting there all morning. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, next item, please.
Move approval of E&amp;B Paving Hardscape Improvements for Showers Building North Lot. Fund name, 2022 GeoBond. Fund number, 4815, in the amount of $296,000.
Sorry, we have, our microphones are not doing well today. We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Carter?
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Monroe County Building and Fleet. Last week, we received proposals, estimates for the showers, hardscape improvements in the parking lot and sidewalks. After careful review, the professional services team has provided a letter of recommendation I'd like to read into the record. Proposals for the 2025 hardscape improvements for the Monroe County showers building north parking lot and main entrance were received Thursday, November 6, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. When bids were opened and publicly read aloud, plans and specifications were picked up by five contractors. Three contractors attended the highly recommended pre-bid meeting, and three contractors submitted proposals for concrete and paving improvements. Based upon the solicitation of four proposals, review of the bid for completeness and response to the specifications and scope of work, it was determined that E&amp;B Paving LLC were the most responsive contractors for this project and submitted the lowest bid. We recommend that the following work be awarded to E&amp;B Paving LLC for a total contract of $296,000. We're going to decline the two alternates. And with that said, this request is to accept the proposal submitted by E&amp;B Paving LLC in the amount of $296,000 to provide concrete, asphalt, and drainage improvements to the north parking lot and sidewalks at the showers building. Alternates one and two will not be accepted. This project will be divided into two phases with the concrete and drainage sections completed by April 1st, 2026, and the asphalt work to commence after May 11th, 2026.
All right, thank you so much. And if you would explain why those dates are important?
Those dates are important. Thank you, TSD. If you look at the screen, the areas shaded black and gray are the concrete pieces. The gray area especially is our accessible parking and our two-hour parking, and right now it's kind of a mess. With early voting happening, it's going to be busy, it needs to be safe and clean, and that concrete work can actually happen during the cold weather months. The asphalt plants shut down here soon, and it makes more sense to tackle the asphalt parking lot after the primary.
Okay, so it's pre-primary and post-primary elections that you are focused on with the dates that you provided?
Correct.
Comments or questions? Commissioner Madeira?
I am super excited about this, and I love this concrete recommendation. And I just remember that when we were opening bids, there was quite a, quite a wide range in estimates, too. So I'm particularly impressed that we could get such an efficient bid. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jones?
I can't wait.
Yes. Yeah, this will be good. And certainly not what we had in mind when we first started, but, but, yeah.
We had, we had some water intrusion event, which, you know, made the project scope evolve.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. But it will be a parking area that will be accessible for early voters, and that's a really important thing. And then the rest of the lot will be done in time for the general, so, general election, so.
Yes.
Yep, excellent work. Good timing. I know it's going to be imperative that they hold to this schedule, so we'll be watching, but I know you will as well, and thank you for your hard work on this. Looks like a good plan. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You could raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the E&amp;B Paving Hardscape improvements for showers building north lot signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. And we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of Wells Lawn Care Agreement for burning bush removal at the Monroe County Convention Center. Fund name, ARPA. Fund number, 8950, in the amount of $6,973.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Kreider?
$973 to remove 25 burning bushes from the parking lot islands in the Convention Center West Lot. The project includes stump grinding, grinding to prohibit new growth, new landscape fabric, and decorative rock.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Madera?
I think these are invasive species, too, right? Yeah, yeah.
That's with people they can't see when they're turning around the corners. And we considered cutting them back, but then when you factor in the invasive piece, it kind of made sense just to pull them off.
Yeah, and they actually grow quite quickly, I think, too. More microphone. Yeah, so I think it's actually just better to cut that and make it safer. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Madera. This is, because they're invasive, it certainly makes sense to get rid of them, and they're very invasive.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I, this is, my microphone, this is a, is this the last ARPA piece for the Convention Center? No, it isn't. Dang, okay, we're almost there, almost there. I, you know, and really, this is their call in terms of what they do. I would really prefer to see some, like, low bush or something that's close to the ground and green versus rock, but, you know, it's really not our call. So I'm not going to go there. But just so they know, if they are listening, think about something green instead that doesn't grow tall. Excellent. Thank you. All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. All right, seeing none. Of all those in favor of approving the Wells Lawn Care Agreement for burning bush removal at Monroe County Convention Center signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Fund name Cumulative Capital Development. Fund number 1138, in the amount of $19,813.70.
I second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Good morning.
An RFID system in hopes for approval to the commissioners. So Guardian RFID is an inmate tracking and software that helps create logs for each individual inmate in our custody. It'll help us bring transparency, structure, and safety to our inmates. These devices will allow us to set schedules for our officers to complete certain events at certain times. And then when these events are completed, it'll attach it to a log for each individual inmate. It'll help us bring safety by setting repeatable timers to check more frequently on inmates who are at high risk for self-harm. And then when these checks are completed, again, it'll help bring that transparency by creating a digital log for each individual whenever those checks are completed. Right now, our current processes are a bit out of date, and we're hoping to update that a little bit. We have a system agreement that's been presented to Mr. Cockrell for review, and we've adjusted some of that language to reflect the laws for the state of Indiana and the change of venue for the state of Indiana.
Okay, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, did you say this involves devices of some sort?
Yes, it would be devices that the officers would use. These devices would scan a wristband worn by our inmates, and whenever it's scanned, it'd bring up the information for that individual. And then whenever movement, or, you know, a meal pass, or being offered recreational time or church, anything that happens with that individual, it creates a digital log attached to that person, where it can all be easily searched and recalled to provide that information, increasing transparency for everybody.
Thank you.
Commissioner Madera?
No, this sounds invaluable, and it sounds like it's actually quite efficient as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad that we're doing this, and this is obviously a system that can move to a new facility if we ever get one. Okay, sorry.
Package that we're buying encompasses the current capacity for our current facility, and it is also up to 500 individuals, you know, so it'd be able to be moved into a new facility as well whenever the time comes.
Yeah, and this is something that we originally, that was originally submitted as a GeoBond item, and we agreed to take it off the GeoBond, and we put it on to Cumulative Capital, because this is a software item, really. So that's the explanation for that. And this is for one year?
So there's an initial fee, and then I believe it's a three-year contract, and there'd be an annual fee. That includes, you know, storage of the information and replacing any devices that get broken. They'll replace those devices, and then if we continue it, at the end of that three-year, they will give us all brand-new devices of that period.
Okay, so I just need to check again, because I've slept once since I reviewed this. I just want to make sure that we've got three years in here as part of the agreement, right?
I just wanted to, yeah, clarify. So the $19,000, that covers the initial payment and the three years. Do we pay in advance, or is it one year? And then we would pay that subsequently?
Mm-hmm.
And the first year of using the product. And then there's two additional years. Each year would have a fee of $14,995. And then it could be renewed for an additional three years, and that $14,995 per year would be continued for the duration of those three.
And there's no advantage to paying early, so now you're going to have to come back every year and ask us for this? Because this was, our motion only covers year one. So do we want them to come back next year and ask for two years? I mean, I feel like we're agreeing to all three years with this contract.
Yeah.
So I would much rather amend the amount and make it a three-year contract. That's, yeah, let me, all right, give me one moment, please.
All right, that is my mistake. I didn't catch
Oh, Angie.
That additional part.
It's okay. I get, tell me if I'm wrong, $49,803.70. Does that sound correct?
Mm-hmm.
I was actually looking at Jeff, because he's a resident mathematician.
Well, I took two, I took Yeah, I took $10 off of $30,000 and added it in, is what I did.
Everyone knows lawyers can't math.
And I did the easy math of, look at the amount. It's darn near $15,000. Take the $5 off, take the $5 off, add $30,000, take $10 off, and that's where I got there. Okay, anyway, math magicians, all of us. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to amend this to reflect the three-year contract. And the total contract price is $49,803.70.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's see if there's any public comment on the amendment. What did I screw up? I'm sorry.
You didn't screw, there's just another amendment, so I don't know if you wanted to have it all.
Oh, I didn't do that, too.
Because as he referenced, we made some changes to the contract, and so I would like to just explain those to you.
Okay.
Working with Greg Crone, our Technical Service Department Director. In Section 2(c), there's a laundry list of other states' rules and regulations for biometrics. We removed those, all of those, and we said that they would comply with the laws of the state of Indiana. And then in the governing law section, it was supposed to be reviewed by the laws of Minnesota. We, again, changed that to the laws of Indiana.
Okay. So let me rescind my motion to amend and revise it. I move that we amend this contract reflecting the text changes as outlined by Attorney Cockrell, and that we reflect the scope of the contract for three years to be $49,803.70.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Thank you, sir. Any public comment on this motion to amend? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending the motion for Guardian RFID inmate tracking system agreement signify by saying aye. 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 All right. Anything else you wish to add?
I don't believe so. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
It's good to see you.
Any public comments on this item overall? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the amended agreement with Guardian RFID inmate tracking system signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. That's the amended motion. All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2025-43, Justice Assistant Grant Assistance Grant, or JAG, grant inter-local agreement. Fund name JAG-Sheriff. Fund number 8143, in the amount of $3,093.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Turner-King, tell us all about it.
So this is the approval of the annual inter-local agreement with the city who receives the JAG grant. They, the county receives 7% of the overall funding, and that's based on violent crime statistics. So that's $3,093 this year. And the intended purpose is for those funds to be used for TASER cartridges. Procedurally, the council has already approved the inter-local. They did that Monday night. Once, if the commissioners approve the inter-local today, I will provide it to the city. And the city is going to provide it to the Attorney General, which is an option instead of having their council sign it.
Scratch my head. Okay. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Madera? No, thank you. We do get this every year, and every year, the sheriff identifies a handy piece of equipment that this will cover. So I'm glad to do this, and yeah, I guess I'm just curious about the city's decision. But it's okay. All right. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Ordinance 2025-43 signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you, ma'am. Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2025-42, Interlocal Agreement with Owen County Regarding the Repair of Owen County Bridge Number 209. Fund name Cumulative Bridge, fund number 1135, in the amount of $46,500.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Ridge?
So this is Owen County Bridge, actually, 209. It connects Monroe County and Owen County on Owen County Line Road. And looking at Indiana Code, adjoining counties can go into an inter-local agreement resolution to split the cost if there's a necessary bridge repair. This is the case of this situation. They don't have a superintendent right now. They have an interim. So we kind of took this over to manage a little bit. So we did reach out, got individual quotes from three different companies. E&amp;B was the lowest quote for the $46,500. It is repairing both approaches on each side. It is to be done before the end of 2025. Owen County passed the resolution last week, so we're requesting Monroe County to do the same. We'll manage it. We'll pay it. We'll schedule it, and then we'll get the reimbursement from Owen County. So that is, and it's just basically fixing the two bridge approaches at that location.
All right, thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, it's kind of nice to be working in cooperation with one of our neighbors.
Commissioner Madera?
Absolutely. I second Commissioner Jones's comments. It's a wonderfully cooperative project, and also one that is badly needed.
Yes. So how much of the total expense at the end of the day will Monroe County be responsible for?
$23,250.
There you go. Thank you. Perfect. Yes, and I know that we've got something on our work session agenda related to this with Bartholomew County. I remember our wonderful highway department going out and helping Owen County a few years back during a massive snowstorm, and then the floods, that's in 2020, the floods. It was, we do, we do reach out, and I appreciate that you've cultivated those relationships. I know if we ever need them, we can call on them. I just can't imagine not having a highway superintendent at the moment. That's got to be tough, so my heart goes out to them. We are so lucky. We are so lucky. Oh, all right, so with that, let's see if there's any public comments. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Ordinance 2025-42 signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. We don't have any appointments today. I'm going to kind of go through these announcements pretty quickly. And for those folks who are watching us live, you can still get over to the Monroe County Childhood Condition Summit, which is being held today. It began at 8 o'clock. It runs till 4 p.m., and it's at the Monroe County Convention Center. Admission is free. Also, the rural housing repair program that we started through ARPA funding is now being managed by the Bloomington Foundation, but contact your township trustee to assist you with the application process. We are accepting applications for all boards and commissions. Go to IN.gov/county/monroe, and you can get a view of all of the boards and commissions and fill out an application. We're almost at that point where we're going to be talking about appointments to these boards and commissions, and it's really important to have your voice heard, and we appreciate those who share their wisdom and time and experience with Monroe County residents and Monroe County government. We do continue to have virtual office hours six times each month. Go to the calendar on our homepage. There is a blood drive tomorrow that we are sponsoring with Ivy Tech, and that is from 1 to 6. There's a blood drive today, but it only goes till 3. These, this is being held at Ivy Tech. Rooms C130A and B. You can go to redcross.org for more information or to make and/or to make an appointment. I will just note that we are taking a little bit of a break, and our next meeting will be December 4. I know, it sounds weird, doesn't it? But we, of course, have Thanksgiving, and we are off next week. So it sounds really bad, but it's, you know, you know. But I do want to make sure folks know that we will be closed on Thanksgiving Day, wishing all of our employees and their families a really wonderful time of gratitude and reflection. The canopy of lights is The canopy of lights is November 28. Usually starts about 6 p.m. or so. This is when they light up the courthouse square. We really encourage residents to come out, it's going to be cold, but that's okay. Yeah, whatever. But we do encourage residents to come out, and I will note that Hoosier Hills Food Bank will have a tent. So they are collecting food and donations of cash and check to help those in need, and we know that the need is great in this community. So please bring food and/or money for Hoosier Hills Food Bank. My joke last couple of years has been bring a can of peas to the canopy of lights. So bring a can of peas. All right. We do have a work session. It's almost, can we do the work session at 11:15? 11:15? Okay, perfect. All right, so our work session will begin 11:15. I want to thank everyone. An early, early happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And thank you, cats, thank you, T S D, as always. And with that, we are adjourned from our regular session, we'll be back 11:15 for the work session.